To communication between the attorney for Smith Communications and Municipal League, acting on behalf of the city of Eureka Springs. It mentions, in particular, certain mitigations, I believe is what Ashpo referred to them as. Specifically, it talked about adding Wi-Fi antenna to the historic gazebo in the park and the Parks Division headquarters. And I just spoke with Bruce Levine. He sounds like he's unaware of these items as well. So I think it'd be good to know, to find out if someone has been communicating on behalf of the city of Eureka Springs. Because it sounds to me like this particular letter is what led the FCC to lift the stop-work order. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anybody else out there, Pat? Let you know. Okay. Come back door. Hey, come on in. Say your name, please.
My name is Raven Durkey. I don't have anything new or different to say to you guys today. Everybody has had ample opportunity to look over documentations that proved from the very beginning when that CUP was filed, that it has been duplicitous in nature. What I've heard from everybody is, there's nothing we can do. Our hands are tied. We've got a moral offense at this, but we can't do anything. And I'm here to say, yes, you can. You can revoke the CUP. You can make a decision. And I know it's not easy, but I mean, be brave and stand up and do what's right. And don't sit here and say our hands are tied, because they're not. You guys could do something today, and I'm asking you to. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. If there's anybody else out there. We all do that, yeah. That's it? All right, thank you. I thought that'd be the last of the public comment. Next item on the agenda would be to open the floor on the main subject.
Move to discuss.
Discussion? Second?
Second.
Okay. Made and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Floor is open. Who is first?
As I've researched this issue, gone through a pile of paperwork, found many interesting One of them, and to me, it's one of the most important items, is I looked at the general release and settlement agreement between Smith Communications LLC versus City of Eureka Springs, Arkansas. When I came to the second page of this document, I found under number five, as consideration for the release, the released party agrees to issue a conditional use permit. I haven't been able to find a conditional use permit. It may exist, but it is not listed on the city clerk's list of conditional use permits issued from 1981 to 2009. I'm not able to find a CUP. It says that we... It says the released party agrees to issue a conditional use permit. However, I've not found that it's ever been actually issued. We go further down in the paragraph, we see, "Released party and releasing party agree that releasing party will have to obtain a certificate of appropriateness through the Eureka Springs Historic District Commission before released party is allowed to issue any building permit." I haven't been able to find a certificate of appropriateness. It may exist, but I would believe the onus would be on the releasing party to show that they have indeed obtained a certificate of appropriateness. Go a little farther down in the paragraph, it says, "Releasing party has agreed and understands that it will be responsible for any usual reasonable and customary fees associated with said permits." I'm not real clear on the status of all that. When we look in our city code book, under District C2 Contemporary Commercial, on page 406 in my book, we find that the purpose, the Contemporary Commercial District, is intended to allow modern development of commercial facilities along major arterial streets. The groupings should be attractive and arranged with every consideration for driving safety and sufficient parking. When we go to the next page, we see bulk and area requirements. Oh, as a matter of fact, Section C says conditional uses. The following lists is a list of conditional uses in the Contemporary Commercial District. These uses require a conditional use permit. We come down here under bulk and area requirements, and we see, "Height above primary street frontage, 45 feet maximum." This is a 195-foot tower. So it stands to reason it's going to be more than 45 feet maximum, height above the primary street frontage. I have found no issuance of a zoning variance for this property. So, in my estimation, since the settlement says, the released party agrees to issue a conditional use permit, I don't think we ever issued that conditional use permit. So that's a jump, a step that's been skipped. Releasing party shall, will have to obtain a certificate of appropriateness through the Eureka Springs Historic District Commission before released party is allowed to issue any building permit. I haven't seen a certificate of appropriateness. The building permit that is on site, up at the building site, expired in March. So it would seem to me that at least one party in this agreement, and maybe all of them, are in breach of contract, which in my estimation makes this contract null and So I would move to issue a stop-work order until we can get all this straightened out and find out if this truly is... if the settlement contract is being complied with, and I don't believe it is. I don't believe they have much of the paperwork that needed to be in place before this project went forward. I think we have a big problem here, folks, and I think it's... would be our due diligence to, at the very least, issue a stop-work order until we can get this straightened out.
Further discussion? Done?
It says 45 feet, and they're building a tower higher than that. We have to change an ordinance. If they want, if we're gonna let them do it, we have to change an ordinance, because it says 45 feet above the street level. And this tower is how tall?
195 feet, if I understand correctly.
A little over 45 feet. So an ordinance has to be changed in order to allow that. That's one thing we have to do, or it's illegal.
Or at the very least, they would need a zoning variance. I don't believe that's been issued.
The ordinance says, right there.
It does.
Any further?
The city's done a lot of messed up things in the past, but this is right up there at the top. I mean, just the whole way through, everybody dropped the ball all the way through this thing. I would move to revoke their CUP, have a stop-work order, and start all over again. Do it right this time.
Second.
Mr. Hayes is here, our attorney from Municipal League. I'm gonna let him speak on the matter also.
Let me, first of all, am I going? Let me first address what some of the public comments were, because I think it's important that you remember, there are two separate things that have gone on. You had a piece of litigation where the cellphone tower provider sued the city. That litigation was resolved by a settlement agreement, which is, in effect, a contract. The essence of that contract is, they'll stop suing you and seeking damages if you allow them to build a cellphone tower. That's it. You agreed to those terms by a 6-0 vote, if memory serves me right, on the city council. The second issue that's been brought up is, I can't remember the gentleman's name, but you talked about the FCC stop order. The city was not a formal party to that proceeding. The FCC was contacted by a private citizen, and the Arkansas Ship-O, which is the state historic entity that oversees this sort of thing for historic areas in the state like your city. Those were the parties: FCC, the Arkansas Ship-O, and the gentleman, this private citizen, who brought the complaint. Okay? So that's, that's a whole different aspect of things. You don't participate in that. You got some notifications of it. And I did get a letter from Mr. Kicklack, their lawyer, the communications cellphone tower lawyer, saying, "We're in the process of resolving this with the FCC, and we're probably gonna give the city some gifts," is in essence what it said. And they're gonna do some things. You don't have to take the gifts, and it might make any difference, that's your business. But the real issue here that you're trying to undo is the first issue. That's a contract, all right? I want to be very clear about this. In my opinion, as your lawyer, you've met your obligations under the, under the contract. And if you attempt to breach it now, you're going to be sued for breach of contract. That carries with it a whole nother set of monetary issues for you. And based upon everything I've heard, and I've heard all the arguments to the contrary, you've met your obligations. The, there is no conditional use permit. There's a document that says, "Accepted or denied." From that, there's an appeal to the city council, whereupon the city council would make a decision, which it did, when it approved the settlement agreement by a 6-0 vote, and building permit was then issued. So the bottom line is, you've got a contract here. I think the contract is solid. You agreed to it 6-0. And when I say "you," I mean the city government. I understand many of you were not at the table at the time. It's not any different than any other contract that was signed by a previous council. It's gotta be honored unless there's something inherently unlawful about it, and there isn't in this one. So I'm, as your lawyer, I'm telling you, that settlement agreement is valid, and I would urge you to strongly consider honoring it further, rather than trying to alleviate it or change it in any way. I'm happy to answer any questions, and I can tell you some about the FCC procedures too, if you want to. But that's a different issue, it doesn't have anything to do with what the city agreed to do.
Question? Mr. DeVito.
My memory fails me. The suit hinged upon the city replying to Smith Communications over the initial action.
Right.
Could you...
Yeah, that's a great question.
...expand a little bit on...
The essence of the lawsuit, now remember how all this started, right? The city denied the, the ability to build the tower, so the tower company sued you. What the city didn't do at the time was provide a detailed list of reasons why the denial was put forward. That's a requirement under federal law. So after some pretty significant litigation, we all, all the lawyers, got together and figured that out, on the, on your side of the equation, I'm not, not on the other side of the equation. And then negotiations at your behest started. And so that's what you, that's, that's, in my estimation, that's why the city agreed to settle the case, was it was concerned about its position from a liability setting. Now, I will also tell you that regardless of the liability issue, the city could have, and may well have, decided, some of the council members may have decided, it wasn't worth the additional expense to go forward with the litigation. Litigation is costly. It takes a lot of time and a lot of money. And there are no guarantees in the long run either, particularly when you get in front of juries. So, anyway, just, the answer's yes, your memory is correct, that you were given advice that you were in a precarious legal position. That is exactly correct.
Any further? Mr. Berry?
Obviously, no one at the city council at the time this came before us wanted the cell tower. Otherwise, we voted, I think, unanimous to deny.
Absolutely.
And contrary to one of the other speakers that came before us, the Smith, the CUP was applied to the planning commission by Smith's Communications.
Correct.
And they denied it.
Correct.
Which then they appealed it to the city council.
Also correct.
I think that was the process, and through there. Had nothing to do with storage buildings or anything else, it was strictly the tower And as Mr. DeVito said and reminded us, the reason we decided to go through this was, we discovered that the city really did not, as you said, give a lot of adequate formal evidence to deny the request, and based on your recommendation. Now what's before us now, and I understand the contract, what you're saying, and I'm not sure this, this settlement would be considered a contract or not. If it is, I don't know. But there does...
I think it is. I think you, I think it's a broker deal between people, and if you'll look at, there's language towards the end of it that said it'll be construed paragraph by paragraph under the laws of the state of Arkansas.
What about, can you address the issues that the Smith's Tower? And I'm not too concerned about the conditional use permit. I mean, that was a granted, I think we're gonna give you a conditional use permit. But then it goes on and talks about the certificate appropriateness and stuff like that.
That was a full vote. That, that was voted on by the appropriate, I think it's a commission, I can't remember the exact title, the Historic Commission, is that right? Yes, they voted on it. It was a hotly contested meeting, if you'll recall, there were people lined up into the street, if memory serves me right. I wouldn't hear that night, Rob Beard was, but I got a full report on it. And, and that was voted on, and it was approved.
And so going on then, and what about the normal application that building permits are only valid for a year, and there's been, is that just irrelevant?
All of those things, it, it's not irrelevant. It needs to be addressed, which I've done. I think all those are told by virtue of the FCC's action. Once the FCC says, "We're the federal government, you go ahead and build that tower," that's it. There isn't any, I mean, everything else had been done at that point, and all that was before the FCC. Building permits, certificate of appropriateness.
So everything was kind of put on hold?
Yeah, it's all, it's all in a holding pattern until that, that gets done. Because remember, when that was started, it was all within the timeframe for the building permit, so that would've all been fine.
Ms. Bell?
Yes, ma'am.
There was never a zoning variance issued. This, this, this structure is out of compliance.
What the city agreed to was to provide any and all permits necessary to have the tower built. If you'll look at the "and" section of it, it says, "Grant any additional permits that may be required to the construction of the facility, including outbuildings and antennas. Such building permit immediately upon application, etc., etc."
So you're saying that...
You agreed to do it, is what it is now.
You're saying that Smith's Communications is allowed to just skip over all these steps and not come in compliance with the city code?
I don't think they skip, I mean, I guess that's a matter of, I suppose that's a matter of debate, depending on what your perspective is, but I don't think they skipped any processes. I think they went through and did all sorts of things.
Obviously, they did.
May I ask you a quick, remote, just remote to Mark?
Yes.
The section number, she's missing, Mark, is, I mean, her code 14-08-09-8. Towers are exempt from that height restriction in any zone that they're allowed. Need to read that code, section 14, dash 08, dash 09, I think, or 03?
I don't know.
Cell tower, it exempts that from the height restriction if it's allowed in a zone, just a lot of, cell towers are allowed in that zone, and then they're exempt from the height restriction, because of course, 45-foot cell tower would do much good. Thank you, ma'am.
Goodbye.
Was that state code?
No, it's your code.
State cell tower.
Which state code? Public or private?
And I'll tell you, it probably does say that. I'm not sure that that matters, frankly. What you agreed to, and I say "you" again, I'm not asserting anything against any of you personally, but what the city of Eureka Springs agreed to was to ensure that whatever permitting was necessary would be taken care of. Now that's, that's the agreement you struck. I've recognized it, trust me. I lived in a historic district, Mr. Berry's known me for longer than neither one of us want to admit. I lived in a historic district in Little Rock for over 20 years. Nobody is more of a historic preservationist than I am. I get it. I understand. That doesn't have anything to do with the broker deal that you have in front of you. And it's all been signed off on, and it's been completed. And I'm just telling you, as your lawyer, you got a whale of an uphill battle if you want to try to overturn it. And that's what you're gonna have to do. Recognize what you're gonna have to do. If you decide you want to break the agreement, you're gonna have to hire a lawyer, you're gonna have to then bring a contract lawsuit against Smith and any other interested parties, of which there may be several. And then from there, you're going to have to proceed through a litigation process. I don't, I, I'm advising you against doing that, but that's the path you're asking to take if you, if you follow through with the motion, as I understood.
So you're saying we shouldn't even ask these people to come into compliance, to go through these steps?
I think they're in compliance, but if there's something specifically you think they haven't done, then, you know, we, I'm happy as your lawyer to take that to them and see if that is gonna make a, you know, make much difference. And I'm happy to do that. If y'all instruct me to do that, I'll, I'll go through your zoning code, and I'll take a look at that statute or the code section that Mr. Kicklack just cited, and I'll see where we actually wind up in that. If they need to do something, fine. I'm not sure that that gets you any further down the road to stopping the agreement. That's the point. The agreement says, "The city will provide and make sure that the permits are taken care of, whatever they may be."
Now, I just wish the, our legal departments, municipal and state, would protect us instead of infect us.
Well, I'm gonna tell you, as your lawyer, I'm offended by that. I'm not, I'm not infecting you.
Well, I don't blame you.
I've represented the city to the best of my ability, as has the lawyer in my office. I remind you that lawyers that get hired to defend cases don't create facts. Facts are presented to us by clients who have taken certain actions. At that point, we are, we, we, as your lawyer, have to give you legal advice. That's why you've contacted us. Our legal advice to you then and is now, A, to settle the case, and B, to honor the settlement. I'm telling you, as your lawyer, I think that's the best route for the city government in this city. If I could go back in time and I could correct factual actions, let me be clear about that, I wasn't here, I wasn't engaged, I wasn't asked about it, but if I could, I'd go back and I'd coach you through it. But that's not my, that's not my job when you come to me after the fact. So with all due respect, you've been given very good legal representation in this lawsuit.
I know you're offense, and I know that I'm offended as well.
Mr. DeVito?
Well, I'm not a lawyer, and I don't play one on TV, but having tried to pay attention as long as I've been on the planet, I've come to the unfortunate realization that laws react to the realities put before us. That I learned from this whole affair that wireless communication is the new utility, like electric, like water, like gas. Yeah, if we'd had a crystal ball, we could've looked into the future and wrote our ordinances based on what the future was all about, but unfortunately, we don't have that benefit. And I would hazard a guess that most laws that are written are to react to the realities of the world, that we now have a law in place regulating anything like this from occurring in our historic district in the future. It's the dynamics of commerce and law that take place in this country, and especially in a democracy that tends to allow commerce to flourish. And, you know, we, we now have a law to address this situation. That's the unfortunate reality that we're faced with. You know, we are not able to peer into the future. What's our next issue going to be? What's the law that you're gonna pass that's gonna stop something from impacting this city again? What are those laws going to be? Do you, do you know what those things are gonna be that are coming down? Wireless communication? I don't own a cellphone. I'm maybe the only rebel in the room that doesn't own a cellphone. Maybe that put, maybe that put me at a disadvantage, but I can speak that we do the best we can with the information we're given, and we sometimes have to make laws to address the reality of the real world. And that's where we find ourselves today, is entered into a contract. I didn't like it. I fought against it. I voted against it, but faced with litigation and ongoing monetary expense to the city, on advice of all the lawyers involved, yeah, we cut a deal. I didn't like it. But the unfortunate reality is, of me sitting in this situation, that I have to make decisions that I don't like. That's what I'm sworn to do as a member of this body. So this isn't about what we want to do and what we like to do, this is about what we have to do. And I think we have to take the advice of all the lawyers concerned in this issue, and unfortunately, deal with the reality before us today.
May I address something? Because the point's a point well taken. The federal law that is in place is very stringent, and in many ways, does not cut in the favor of local government. That's a federal law. I didn't, you know, send me to Congress, and maybe I can change it, but I, my job is to give you advice on it. You've mentioned a new ordinance that you've put into place, and let me just tell you that I think would be incumbent upon the city, this is how you can look into the future, and how you can work on it in the future, I hope. You can look at it about every eight to 12 months, because right now, in Congress, there's work going on to tweak that federal law even more. And so you want to make sure that you're in compliance with it. So you ought to charge your city attorney to, you know, in the next six to eight months, begin to look at any new regulations that have come down, so that you can make sure you've done everything in your power to protect the area of your historic city that you want to protect. And I think it's a great point. It's a point well taken.
Mr. Riffey?
Where was our city attorney when this was all happening? Why wasn't he advising everyone to do what was proper? It seemed like this thing just got pushed through. Anyway, forget it. I'm withdrawing my motion.
Okay. Mr. Berry?
You know, I was on the city council when this came through, and as Mr. Hayes noted, he and I have fought other battles, billboards, again, federal communication. We, I know and realize, I mean, I can give you a lot of expertise on billboards, I could not give you expertise on cell towers. And obviously, even our Municipal League attorneys could not, at the time, we denied this and went into the litigation, had the expertise. It was only after going into a lot of discovery that we discovered the federal law. Federal law is very slanted, as Mr. Hayes mentioned. The city was at fault in not being able, in not being aware, let me back up. Smith Communications presented to the city council a lot of scientific and engineering data to the council on why this should be done. We, as the city council, not knowing that we needed to present the same amount of engineering and scientific data, thought we were on the safe side by saying, "We don't feel this is appropriate for our city," and denied it. Municipal League agreed with us at that point, or else I don't think they would recommend it and represent us. It was only after we got into the litigation, we discovered how strong federal law is slanted toward communication towers and communication businesses. Same thing with billboards. You gotta be careful. We have to be careful. If we would've spent the same amount of money that Smith Communications spent on engineering and scientific data, we might've stood a chance on denying this application. We didn't do it. We weren't aware at the time, it was too late. The cattle were out, out the gate, and there wasn't much we could do to bring it back in. Or at least, that's my understanding, when this settlement was presented to us. And that's why we said, "We can't win on this case." And we went with the recommendation of our attorneys, who are, in my opinion, pretty good and represented us as best as they could. Anyway.
Any further? Doc?
Somebody make a motion, this is going on and on.
This is going on and on. I don't want the cap of motion to make.
Well, Mr. Raffield would do his motion, but Miss Balance had a motion. She moved to cease any further operations at the cellphone tower site until all the permits were agreed. There was never a second on it, did I believe? Was there a second on it? No second. So, the motion died. Any further discussion? This is your chance right now. You've heard the opinion of our attorney. Okay. If there's no further discussion, call for a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
Made and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.